Morning, Mr. Benson.
Morning. We're having introduction of legislative bill number 2023-15, which is emergency legislation, which would be a six-month moratorium on cannabis. We have Mr. Andrea Illuminati from the county attorney's office here today to make a presentation, I think, with regard to this.
And motion from council to introduce legislative bill number 2023-15.
Smooth.
Second. Morning, Mr. Illuminati.
Good morning.
You told me you used my.
Okay, okay.
I think, Mr. Illuminati, the councils, with all the preparation that you've given us in the briefbook, we do appreciate it. Very, very exact. But I think the public would probably also want to know why we have two bills in place here, one for a moratorium and then an actual legislative bill.
Right.
So I think that's going to be the crux of the discussions for both of these bills today, so that the public realizes exactly why it seems to be two different issues, but one in the same.
So I think we'll, as part of this presentation, it will cover most of 20 legislative bill number 2023-16. So here's the development since last council meeting. On September 8th, the Maryland Cannabis Administration sent an email articulating what's going to happen between now and the end of the year. So the application process will begin on November 13th. There's a number of awards to be made. And then between November 13th and December 12th, that will be the 30-day open application period. And then between December 12th and January 1st, they will make the awards for the various licenses. We know Wycomico County will receive two dispensary licenses. Dispensary is the opportunity to sell adult-use cannabis. Additionally, there are a number of microlice grower and processor, as well as microlicenses available. We are in the eastern region. There are eight counties in that region. There are a total of 26 non-dispensary or non-standard dispensary licenses that are available. How that will be divided will be, the award is made at the state level. Do I think all 26 will come to Wycomico County? No. But looking at the population free market, I imagine a significant number will want to locate in Wycomico and Worcester County. So those are the additional awards that are available. We know two standard dispensary, up to 26 non-standard dispensary. So why is the zoning legislation needed? We talked about that period in time between when the application window will close and when the awards will be made. Under our, that will be approximately between December 13th and January 1st, 2024. Under our county code, if somebody makes an app, gets that award, and wants to come in and get, begin the permitting process, we do not have any cannabis zoning regulations in Wycomico County. This is the enumerated process for how someone would be able to begin operating their, under their cannabis award, whether it's dispensing, processing, or growing, or whether it's a standard or a microlicense. So the Board of Appeals would make the determination of what it's most similar to and what its compatible use is. Essentially, I don't want to say, we use the word usurping, but that's not the intent. It's in the code. Councils approve the code. But bypassing the council's decision on what it needs and what the planning commission is recommended. So with a moratorium, so these two bills are being introduced, one is an emergency and one as a standard legislative bill. They track the same, but an emergency bill becomes effective upon being signed, whereas a legislative bill goes through a 60-day process. With our timeline that we will get into later, there will be a gap. If you elect to introduce legislative bill 2023-16, just the cannabis zoning as an emergency legislation, then the moratorium becomes less necessary, but then you really don't have any room for additional discussion. So as previously discussed, we're going to have this gap between December 13th and January 1st, as introduced today, where the zoning regulations will not be effective. The moratorium will not stop lawful cannabis sale in Wycomico County through the one current dispensary. That's really important to understand. This is not a halt on the processing, growing, or dispensing of cannabis. That single entity located in Salisbury City will be allowed to continue being operational. What it will prevent is it will prevent a business that gets awarded a license between December 13th and the date that the cannabis legislation becomes effective from coming to the department and beginning the application process. They will not ultimately be stopped from opening. It's just that come ideally January 7th, when the cannabis zoning law becomes effective, then they will adhere to the new legislation that this council will pass. Really important, looking at the second from the bottom bullet point. Earlier this year, the council passed a solar energy legislative bill. Non-emergency, 60 days to be effective. In that 60-day period, three solar companies went to the Board of Appeals and were not subject to the requirements of the law the council recently passed. Now, I'm also the attorney for the Board of Zoning Appeals. We worked with those solar companies to say, these are the new regulations. We want to incorporate these new regulations into your presentation, into what you're doing. They agreed. The board approved it. So it wasn't there, but the, we obviously saw three companies that felt waiting 60 days was not in their interest. They wanted to get in before the new legislation was effective. I think you could see the same exact thing here. This has not targeted a cannabis. I believe going forward, planning and zoning, whenever there is a text amendment to zoning, we'll recommend a moratorium, if it's significant enough, to avoid these entities trying to jump in during the 60 days. We cannot stop them from applying in the 60 days. The Board of Zoning Appeals can't elect not to meet during those 60 days. They would make their application under the old law. So this is the need for the moratorium. And having already seen that abuse earlier this year strengthens the basis for the need for that moratorium, if the legislative bill for unzoning is going to be non-emergency. So these are the state restrictions. This is really quick. We talked about this during some of the previous discussions. What's emboldened and underlined are the big requirements. Any zoning regulations must be reasonable, and the county may not make any requirements that are unduly burdensome. And the county can regulate onsite consumption. On-site consumption is a dispensary where then individual can consume oils, ointments, edibles, tinctures. The recommendation is to stay away from onsite at this time. We can get into the discussion upcoming. The reasonable zoning and unduly burdensome, these are undefined terms within the Maryland cannabis law. There is the Mako position paper on the state, on the Senate bill, says these phrases introduce undefined terms that would effectively defer to the courts to set the true standard for what is reasonable or unduly burdensome. Within this context, I could not find any case law on point that would define exactly what this Timeline and process for the proposed zoning restrictions to date. So we first met on July 1st, or on July 1st, the adult-use cannabis became legal in Maryland. The one medicinal dispensary in Wycomico County located in the city of Salisbury paid the conversion fee and became adult-use. On July 18th, Sheriff Lewis, Krista Val, the Cannabis Administration, and myself were present, and we had a discussion with council. On July 20th, the Planning Commission had its first cannabis discussion with Director Carter and myself. On August 1st, we were back before council with Director Carter and myself to discuss what happened on the July 20th Planning Commission meeting. On August 24th, the Planning Commission had a special cannabis zoning meeting. That was the entire point of that meeting. Director Carter and various members of her staff, as well as myself, made presentations. Between September 7th and September 20th, there was a public review period based on what the consensus of the Planning Commission was on the 24th. On September 21st, the Planning Commission held a public hearing specifically on cannabis zoning. And on October 5th, the Planning Commission approved the director's report, which is included in the documents provided. So let's work through the proposed legislation that came out of the Planning Commission. There's three sections. The first is just adding a bunch of definitions. These are the state definitions with the word cannabis in front of it, so that when they're in alphabetical order, they'll all be grouped together. Additionally, at the bottom, you see recreation center. In the state regulations, recreation center was not defined. We have a good definition for recreation and a good definition for active recreation. So recreation center includes both recreation and active recreation establishments within the zoning chapter. This is what the table of permitted uses would look like. It would be in industrial. It would be grower, processor by permit in the I-1 and I-2, by special exception for dispensaries in the I-1 and I-2. Really important, and we're going to see that this is reemphasized later in the legislation, but when no letter appears in the table, the use/structure is not permitted in that district. That's already in the code. And the list of permitted uses set forth in the table is all-inclusive. All uses that are not listed in the table of permitted uses are prohibited. So you don't see an N or anything in any of the other spots. We're not even looking at the residential section, because, again, if it doesn't have a letter designation, it is not a permitted use. Going into what the special standards for cannabis use will be. This is the state law, but what's bold and underlined is added in the, so we know that there will be a 500-foot buffer between pre-existing primary or secondary schools in the state, as well as licensed childcare centers or registered family childcares at home. 500 feet between a playground, recreation center, which we've already defined, a library. We added place of assembly that was not in the state legislation, or a public park. And then 1,000 feet of another cannabis business. Additionally, a cannabis onsite and stuff, consumption establishment is prohibited within Wycomico County. And to reinforce what was on the previous slide, a cannabis business not enumerated as a permitted use in 225-6-67 is prohibited within Wycomico County. This is the recommendation of the Planning Commission, based on staff and the testimony received before the Planning Commission. So now we're going to see what those buffers look like when we map the proposed legislation. So the yellow is the county. The gray are the various municipalities within the county. Each municipality has afforded the right to zone as they wish for cannabis. They have the same state buffers that we previously just went over. They have the right to allow or prohibit onsite consumption. This is by parcel, and you can see what is in red are the I-1 and I-2. What is in the gray are still the municipal. It's a little bit harder to see here with the various parcel boundaries also being in light gray, but everyone's familiar with the layout of the county. When you remove the parcel boundaries, these are the nine areas within Wycomico County. In the upper left-hand corner is the breakdown. There are 2,119 and a half acres of I-1 or I-2 in Wycomico County, over 307 parcels. So we know that there are two dispensaries coming. If they want to locate in Wycomico County, they will have approximately 2,120 acres on which to locate.
But that doesn't include what the city can do. They can locate anywhere in the city, correct?
Correct. The city.
This is just county.
Went before, and this will be true for Pittsville, Fruitland, but specifically when we say the city, I believe we're referring to Salisbury City. They went before the Planning Commission at the last special Planning Commission meeting on October 5th. They are mirroring the county's recommendation, but they are, I believe, at this point considering certain, within certain commercial areas, and they will be working, they're only in the preliminary stage. They will be going through Planning Commission in the coming weeks to make their full presentation.
For clarity on that, if Mardella wanted to move forward?
They'd have to consult with their own council and make.
They can do what they want within their municipal bounds.
Correct.
So Salisbury wanted to have a dispensary downtown per se. They could, they could do that.
As long as they follow the state regulations, plus any additional regulations they follow. Correct. I mean, we have, in the county, not though in the heart of the downtown where the government office building is, but a mile and a half down the road, give or take, is the one dispensary. They can make the decision where they want to locate it. We have the Episcopal Church. We have churches across the street. I don't know what the 500-foot boundary is there. They may decide to grow those boundaries. They may decide to shrink those boundaries, but they are given that autonomy.
I mentioned this, Laura. Worcester County was able to change their legislation so that they had 2,000 feet from a, from a secondary school. And they have 2,000 feet from a playground, recreation center, and library, and, and another licensed dispensary. I just, I just wonder why we can't do the 2,000 feet like Worcester County? Or is that something we can do?
I think you can make the decision. Going back to the actual legislation passed by the state, the phrasing was only that a municipal, that a local government could shrink the 1,000 feet. Since then, at MML, at Mako, various talking points, the committee has said, that's not what we meant when we wrote that. We meant that we could grow it. It's silent. Mine, I could defend it either way, either way you want to go. But over the past 30, 40 years, we've gone away from what the goal and thoughts and hopes and dreams of the legislature was and what they actually passed. And what they passed was, it can only be shrunk. It's silent as to whether it can be grown. It's defendable either way. There's support out of various committee notes, but it's something to tread lightly with. It may be something that gets corrected in the coming year, but that's why when we look at this slide and look at where it's being located at this time, I don't know if you become unduly burdensome based on these 2,120 acres. And I can't tell you what that number shrinks to if you grow it to 2,000. What I will say is, this is the first round of license awards. There will be another one in May. It's unknown what the county will receive in the future, but the county will have its prerogative in the future to reexamine its zoning code. May say I-1, I-2 is not enough. The fears that were perceived didn't ever materialize. Also, the fears that were perceived materialized, and we need to shrink it more to provide for the public safety, welfare, and health. So you are free to amend the proposed legislation.
So let me just ask. So if we amend it, I'm just speaking hypothetically. So if we amend it, let's just say 2,000 feet, and Salisbury says we want to allow it to be in this area, but it's within the 2,000 feet that the county made a law on. Would the, would the city be able to override the county legislation to allow their dispensary to be wherever they need it to be?
It would likely still be in violation of the county's, just because it's on the border, or is that you can't be within 2,000 feet of a, it's going to be an issue.
Well, my question is, is within these red lines, I would be interested in where the closest schools are, or, or churches.
So that was something that went through Planning Commission. That's something that I could either share with you individually, or could be at the public hearing. I could share that additionally. That was originally all map. So when you see these sort of straight lines, especially up in number one, that's as a result of the buffers, I believe that might even be the next slide. That's a result of the buffers in play, because that's not the natural, so this is, how much is available following the buffers?
With the 500-foot buffer.
With the 500-foot. And the 1,000-foot, well, the 1,000-foot will come in once we determine where one elects to locate.
Yeah. My, I think my decision would be, would basically be on how close a school is to, to that. You know, if it's within 500 feet, you know, we have Ms. Miles in the audience. She specifically said, I would like it to be as far away as possible. So I mean, you know, I, I'm just thinking, you know, if we have a school within 500 feet of that red line.
I'm assuming that, I'm assuming that in configuring this format for industrial zones, you've already taken that into account, right? Planning and zoning would not recommend this if it were within that boundary.
Correct. I mean, this, this gives you an idea of, with all the buffers, how much space is still left. I'm trying, I am listening. I'm trying to also see if I can locate any of the maps so that I can plug in.
We do the moratorium, we'll have more time to discuss this, is what I'm.
That is the, so to the, if I may, just go to the next slide, and then that will help understand the moratorium, and we'll work backwards. So the recommendation is today to be a first reading on the cannabis legislative bill and a first reading on the moratorium. The moratorium would be emergency. The first reading on the cannabis legislative bill would be non-emergency. The November 7th would be a public hearing on both. Second reading on cannabis legislative bill and second reading on moratorium. If, following the public hearing, you wanted to table the cannabis legislative bill to have further discussion, as long as the moratorium passed that time or a very short thereafter future meeting prior to December 13th, because that's when we know the window closes for the 30-day application, you basically would have until the first meeting in December to pass the moratorium. In theory, the executive gets presented the next day, signs it the next day, and it becomes effective immediately. Under this timeline, it gets presented on November 8th, and then it gets signed on November 8th. That would be where it is. Then we see between December 13th and January 1st, the state will make its awards. And then if the legislative bill for the cannabis got passed on November 7th and signed on November 8th, it would not go into effect until January 7th. The longer the legislative bill for the zoning gets delayed, the longer you go beyond that January 7th. But the goal of the moratorium is to provide you that buffer to have the debate. Additionally, there is a clause within the moratorium that it, it expires either on six months or upon effect of the cannabis business zoning law becoming effective. So you will not need to meet again to rescind the moratorium. The moment the law becomes effective, it will drop, it will no longer be in existence.
And so I guess we would need another work session on this.
We'll introduce the legislation, and we certainly would have opportunity to discuss it when the actual legislative bill comes up. Anything else? Seeing none. All those in favor of the introduction of legislative bill number 2023-15 as emergency legislation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. The introduction of legislative bill 2023-15 as emergency legislation passes unanimously. The entertaining motion to introduce legislative bill number 2023-16.
Smooth.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, yes.
Oh, is it, we can, I did want to get into the detail of the bill itself, but we don't, if you want to leave it.
We can do that. We'll have the opportunity to do that now, or we'll have the opportunity to do that when the actual legislative bill comes back to our table in 30 days, right?
Well, I mean, it's up to council, but we can, we also meet, you know, the first meeting in November, which is that November 7th meeting that he was talking about, the public hearing. We can certainly consider a work session at that meeting as well.
We have a motion second. Go ahead, Josh.
Well, you know, I want to get, I do have a series of questions. It might take five minutes or so, and I don't want to belabor anything, but I want to get it straight. Obviously, given the emergency legislation and the quick timeline, I want to make sure that we're getting it correct on, on this, so that we're thinking it through in the right way. If that's okay. So I guess, trying to get from my understanding, so of course there's a difference between, you said, up to 26, and I'm not sure if that means, that doesn't mean up to 26 dispensaries. That means 26 grower, micro grower, processor facilities in general. Is that correct?
This is the 26. So in each region, there will be four grower awards, eight processor awards.
Really, but dispensaries is really what we're all thinking about, caring about.
Okay. So we know that there will be two known dispensaries in Wycomico County in this award. Then when we look down at micro, that a micro dispensary is a dispensary that can operate a delivery service that sells cannabis or cannabis products without a physical storefront, provide that the license employs not more than 10 employees. So that's what a micro license for a dispensary allows. So two storefronts, we know those are coming.
Is it two stores, two storefronts and then potentially?
And two minivans.
And two, okay. The other one, of course, is, obviously, this is hypothetically, if someone wanted to open a, a medical-only facility.
That's not allowed under state law.
Can't do that.
Anyone who wanted to open a, a medical facility was under the old law.
Yeah, allowed to, just because that was the only thing that was allowed at that time.
Correct.
But if someone wanted to specialize in?
Nope. State law doesn't allow.
Okay.
So there's sort of what they're doing, I believe, the intent is, is first, I believe, 100% of all medicinal converted to recreational. They're going to have sort of, back in the early COVID days, they had early shopping hours for the elderly or infirmed, and they're going to have the same thing a certain period of time in the business will be only for medicinal individuals. Medicinal individuals will have the opportunity to purchase the same product. They just don't pay the tax.
So the county's desire here is to, make sure I'm getting this right, is to essentially put the dispensaries in, only in industrial zones?
At this time.
The definitions, do we need to amend the definition of light industrial and heavy industrial? Pulling them up, obviously, they don't match. I don't understand how a dispensary would match the definition of either a light industrial or a heavy industrial. This says specifically for light industrial, including manufacturing, wholesaling, research and development activities. We're not doing any of those, correct?
At the Planning Commission level, there was testimony from staff that there are other storefronts in industrial already. So that's why the recommendation.
So the, sure. The manufacturing, obviously, if, if you're growing something, that makes sense. You've got a smell. If you are manufacturing it, they're assembling it. I don't know how they do it, and they make stuff, then that makes sense, right? But obviously, a storefront. But obviously, a storefront, that doesn't really quite fit the definition as we currently have it of light industrial. It's not the storage of toxic or hazardous chemicals. I guess maybe that's the closest thing to the definition?
Again, I would defer to staff on that, the recommendation of planning commission. Recommendation of staff is not to amend those definitions. Further, the testimony at the planning commission level was that businesses do operate, opportunity to purchase within the I-1 and I-2.
Yeah. Josh, I think what the planning commission's explanation or staff's explanation was that it's a lesser business than a heavier business, I guess is a good way to put it. In other words, people can live in an industrial area if there's a house there, or people can have a convenience store in an industrial business or a restaurant in an industrial area, I'm sorry, not business. So I think that's where the purpose of that came in, and Mrs. Carter's here, if she wanted to talk about that.
Well, that makes more sense. I guess that we are also in the process of trying to look at liquor dispensary system and how we move about alcohol. We've, of course, heard only an hour ago how detrimental alcohol is to the community. Are we going to match the definitions for cannabis to that of alcohol?
That would be a discussion for council to have.
I mean, I guess what, I think you all see where I'm kind of getting at, is it just seems like that's a, you know, far be it for me to be the one to be an advocate for this, but it seems to be, you know, it's not quite spot zoning or anything along those lines, but it's a, it does feel like we are being intentionally restrictive for something that is, you know, that by any statistical analysis whatsoever is nowhere remotely nearly as bad as alcohol, but we are at the same time thinking about, let's just open up more spaces for alcohol.
So some of the concerns that were presented at the planning commission meeting, and the planning commission did an amazing job with this, they worked really hard. You saw the various times that they met, they had multiple special meetings, and they really handled the information that was presented to them. There are a couple of important considerations in why the initial recommendation is narrow. First is it's easier to start small and grow. If you start too large and go later that this is not working and go to shrink it, then you will have legal non-conforming uses, and those entities that were established in areas that it was later determined that was not a good location for them, allows them to continue to operate in that subprime location until they lose their non-conforming use. Part of that has to go with law enforcement resources and the ability to have a smaller area to patrol for dispensaries. It also allows to grow over time. There's nothing stopping after we see the second round of appointments in May, see any further development in the legislation this legislative session as it relates to future licenses, that and how it honestly performs over the course of the next six to nine months from a directive from the commission, from the council to the commission, to let's look at the next potential way to grow this. That is, that's part of the concerns that were presented to the planning commission on this. So that's our recommendation, just like council member wins, can possibly in favor of growing the area. If you would like to make an amendment to change the zoning, that's not the recommendation of staff, that's not the recommendation of the commission, but that's your prerogative as council member.
Question.
I want to move this on because these are questions that we can certainly do when the legislative bill comes back to the table.
The, just the last question was just the place of assembly. I think that was the, it said, I didn't see that defined in any of the thing that was given to us.
Sorry, defined within the county code.
What is that?
Churches. What?
Place of assembly. I'm assuming that's trying to get at a religious, but not trying to say that specifically. You know, I know Shani assembles it, McDonald's hangs out, is that a place of assembly? I hang out occasionally and play some disc golf, is that a place? I don't...
And he says, yes, it is.
I'm trying to connect, but I can...
It's okay.
Either email you, that's already defined within the county code and commission felt it was satisfied with the current definition.
Well, I guess interested in wrapping that up, and I'll be there. Obviously, since we're trying to expedite this, you know, I don't, to me, it feels like the dispensary part, you know, A, well, I'm happy to see that go into municipalities. I think that's a better location, but to me, there's a difference between the dispensary side of things and then the growing and production side of things. That makes sense in an industrial. To me, it just seems a little bit odd that we are putting them into the, you know, the actual dispensary parts where folks would have to go to those areas, that it's not a walkable community, there's no sidewalks, there's no space, you know? So that seems a bit odd, and it doesn't seem congruent with where we were going with alcohol. I don't think we're going to try and create a sin zone where everyone can go hang out and drink their alcohol and use other hears, but regardless, I think that that should probably personally would be pulled out. The dispensary part should be put into something a little more specific within a commercial or within a general commercial area, so I'll leave that alone.
One more point, because I just want to reedit, to put it out there because it was something the planning commission considered and that I forgot to mention. Parking in the industrial, there are no, the parking standards are completely different. Part of the biggest problem is out on Mount Herman Road, the lack of parking, the lack of good neighbor, that is something that the I-1, I-2, there'd be less of an issue with because there are not the same enumerated parking standards. And so again, if you have the backup of traffic, rather than being on Mount Herman Road right in front of the school, it's going to be out in a more rural area, and that was another consideration is because parking has been disastrous at the rollout over the last couple months, and that was another consideration of the commission.
I think that's obviously a one-sided solution or consideration considering that most folks, you know, many folks may have access to vehicles, but many don't. We obviously don't want to, you don't put a library out far enough where no one can get to it. You put it in centralized location where it can be, have parking, but also have access to walk to it. Except for in Parsons.
All those in favor of the introduction of legislative bill number 2023-16, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed? And the introduction of legislative bill number 2023-16 passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. President. For myification here, we're not broadcasting, I apologize. Here is what I believe is the current, I don't know why it's not going up, but the, on November 7th, there is going to be a public hearing on the moratorium, correct?
It would be both.
On both?
Yes.
Okay.
And we could potentially vote on both at the same time.
All right.
That definition for you, Josh? Yeah? Let me read it.
We could amend it same day.
Yeah. So for the next meeting, you'd like a map that shows the various enumerated buffers, the schools, places of assembly? And that's going to be, I'll just be honest, we've already, mapping places of assembly is very difficult just because they can, somebody can claim that, you know, a very small area is their place of assembly. We're going to be looking at the larger churches, synagogues, mosques, things of that nature in the mapping, but when someone comes in to make their application, staff will do a comprehensive review to determine whether or not there are any smaller denomination places of assembly within that 500-foot buffer. So more maps, and then do you want to see a potential map with 2,000 feet?
I think from the school's perspective, 2,000 feet, at least from the schools.
Just on schools?
2,000, it's 500 right now.
It's 500 right now, but Worcester County was able to pass something with 2,000 feet.
For the schools or for the distance between businesses?
Both, all of it. I could send it to you if you want.
I, well, that's fine. It's a clarification. Where are they measuring from?
So that's something that will be sort of deferred. So it's difficult to say, it's a great question. Measuring from parcel boundary to parcel boundary ensures the greatest protection because if you go from front door as the bird flies, which is the usual radius of 500 feet, you could still end up in something less than ideal because what's to stop somebody if they don't make it where their current front door is from relocating their front door to the side or doing something of that nature? It may be something that further guidance, but something that can be clarified from staff.
If you, if you have a big enough piece of property, you could have a dispensary literally across the street if you're measuring from the front door.
That's definitely a concern and something to continue to look at.
I think it's best if we'd be very, 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 very specific in our own legislation despite the fact what the state has done, what they've said, the more that we can be specific, the better.
I believe in, with alcohol, it's parcel to parcel, so.
Anything else you need clarification?
Yeah, that's absolutely fantastic.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
I will see you. Any further questions on this? Again, thank you for all the amazing questions. Thank you to staff, they did an amazing job led by Director Carter. Thank you to the executive for her leadership on this, and a hugest thanks to the planning commission and Chairman DeShiel. Mr. Holloway can testify, they really, they did a lot on this. So, and they did in a short timeframe because, as has been mentioned, this is time-sensitive because of the mandates from the state. So, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
This time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any public comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please state your name, your county residence, and your concerns. No comments? That concludes public comments. Council comments?
I have one thing to say, make an announcement.
Mm-hmm.
You're going to, there's going to be a Wycomico night out at the Indian Village Playground on Manoa Boulevard, 4:30 to 6:30 PM, and what they're doing is almost like a kickoff for the new basketball court, and I think this will draw attention to the Indian Village Playground, hopefully, and we would invite everyone that's listening to come and have some fun. That's all I have to say, believe it or not.
Any other, yes, Joe?
Today, in regards to the vote on the Parsons Lake, I don't know whether we didn't get a second because of the forest relocation or for the traffic, but that did go in front of the planning commission, and the planning commission did have reports from county roads and public works as far as the traffic went, so it wasn't a concern to them, and we also had sent letters to the school board, so there's no problem there. So anyway, I don't know why we didn't get a second. That's fine, but I just wanted to explain that that was, I was confused by that, that was, there has been approved by the county roads, so.
Any other comments? Yeah, I agree, Joe. I mean, that process or any appeal he might want to make should be to your appeals board, not to the council. We were doing mitigation, that was it. The roads would have to go, needs to go back to you guys for an appeal. Josh, is?
Yeah, I just want to say thanks. I was obviously, I was out for last week, so I had another hospital stay with another lung collapse, partial lung loss, but hopefully both of my lungs are fixed now, and I appreciate all the great comments from folks and all the great support, especially from all the council members and staff, I really do appreciate that. Thank you all very much.
It's not the same without you up here, Josh. I just want to extend my prayers and thoughts to the people of Israel, and I hope they can resolve the situation and get it over with, and that's it.
Saying look the clues.
entertaining motion to adjourn from legislative session, go into open work session followed by a closed session to discuss a personnel matter relating to independent legal counsel to protect the privacy of the individual pursuant to the general provisions, Article Section 3-305B1, and a closed administration session to discuss internal audit projects pursuant to the general provisions, Article Section 3-104. Council will reconvene in open legislative session at 2:00 PM to consider Resolution Number 138-2023 pertaining to a bond award. That's the motion.
Send move.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Legislative meeting is adjourned. First item on the open work session, we have the discussion with Talky Communications. Thank you all for being here.
You're getting good at reading. Sounds good.
It's a lot. It's a mouthful. Hello, gentlemen, we haven't seen you in a long, long time. You've been busy, right?
Thank you for having us.
If you could introduce yourselves to the public, we'll go from my left to right.
Okay. Hi, my name is Andre Dematia, I'm one of the owners of Talky.
I'm Andrew Dematia, the other owner.
Mike R. Scott, project management.
Glad to have you here. We're just waiting for the good news.
Okay.
We had a map that we sent, I'm not sure how to launch it.
Oh, they have it.
So Mike's the project foreman on it, so he's going to be able to be the expert on talking about the progress in the individual areas. So Mike, I'm just going to turn it over to you. Do you need to walk them up?
Um, no, we're pretty good. So the Eden area, the Eden Project is pretty much done. I believe we'll start turning the rest of the customers up, scheduled for next week, I think they are. We've got probably half of them done all the way down Morris Road, Ben Davis Road, all that over to 60-foot road is ready, we're ready to go. As you can see by the map, I don't have the map, but as you can see by the map, we've done a lot of work, a lot of the construction part phase is done. Right now, we're in downtown Pittsville, and the reason we moved out of the areas that were, the roads that were designed around Pittsville is we have to go through there for our main path, and I had a hard time getting the town of Pittsville to sit down with me to get through the town, so as soon as they said go, I wanted to get that over and done. So we've gone Ocean City, Old Ocean City Road, through Pittsville's done, they're going up Gumborough Road as we speak right now, so once that's done, we'll get back out to the county roads and get all that taken care of.
Yeah. Questions?
I've, you've been down my road, Shabox Road.
Okay.
And I called one day, and I think I was talking to Andre.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and I was asking, of course, how much it costs to get hooked up, and you made a comment, you said, "There won't be any hurry, we'll be around for about five years." What did you mean by that comment? Are you going to sell out in five years?
Oh, no, we're going to die with this. I said, "We'll die working broadband," so I, we're never going to retire, so no, I don't know.
What did you mean by that? You'll be around for five years?
I think maybe we were talking about the grant, the grant duration. We've got multiple grants, we've got, the federal grant is a 10-year grant, we're two years in. I don't remember exactly what the conversation was for the five-year part, but...
No, I asked, I just, my question was, you know, how much, because I have an 800-foot driveway, how much does it cost? And you were telling me there wasn't any cost, and I said, "Was there any time limit?" You said, "No, don't worry about it, we'll be around for another five years."
No, I don't remember that. I must have misspoke. No, we're not planning on selling.
So basically, the ARDOF, we have a 10-year commitment from the time that we got it, it's about a year and a half ago. Probably the eight years talking about, no, there's zero intentions of selling. A lot of rumors go out, we've heard a lot of our competitions saying, "Oh, they're going to sell, they're going to sell." We're not selling. It's not even on the table.
I mean, I was talking to him, he's the one said it.
Yeah.
They answer each other's questions.
And we're identical twins, so.
So we do have about eight more years to be left on the ARDOF in its entirety. Our plan is to build the areas that we were already committed to and then overbuild where the more populated areas are at. We would love to do Salisbury, but, you know, we see another provider moving in, so there might not be an opportunity. We don't generally like overbuilding fiber optic companies, cable companies, not a problem, but fiber optics, we generally don't like to overbuild fiber.
Fine. I answered it directly, no, we're not planning on selling, I have no intentions of selling. There are other people that are making rumors up, because I've had the same questions from Worcester County as well, and the commissioners called me directly, and this not found, none of that is true. So I don't remember the gist of the conversation, five years.
What's the number of homes? Is it 700, is that right?
One more time?
The number of homes that you're planning to reach?
Oh, I think the first grant was closer to 1,000 homes.
1,000, okay. Now, I guess the question everybody wants to know is the timeline as to when all these pending projects will be completed and they'll be fully accessible to fiber.
So again, I don't have a map for you guys. The map that I sent?
The complete.
The complete, the...
Nonpartic...
Yeah, okay, so as soon as we get the fiber in, we'll start pulling, there was some problems with getting materials because so many grants that went out in the country that everything got short, but now that's starting to roll in again. As soon as we get the fiber and start pulling the fiber, we can have that whole area pulled in probably about two weeks, two to two and a half weeks to get it pulled, and then another half a week to a week to get it spliced, and then we can turn people on.
So we're thinking this particular grant, we're hoping to have majority of it completed So, we're thinking this particular grant, we're hoping to have majority of it completed by end of next year. Our original goal was one year, but we did have some supply chain issues. And we want to get it done before bead comes out, which is the next grant, because they're gonna be, the exact same supply chain issues are gonna happen as soon as that happens. So, our goal is to have majority done by end of next year.
Does that compromise your funding when you don't reach your deadline as far as the...
We have no choice but to reach the deadline.
I'm just wondering whether or not that threatens your...
Yeah, so there is milestones that we have to meet for each different, every grant's a little different milestones. With the state infrastructure grant for Wacomico, it's two years that we have to do 50%, and then the rest at the third year. But we believe that by the year two, we'll be 100% completed. So, we're not worried about Wacomico falling behind at all.
Do you think by the year, by what year you'll be completed?
By the end of...
We're trying, end of 2024.
2024?
Yeah.
Okay, because that's what the public really wants to know is...
Everyone asks timelines. So, what we're doing is we're putting, as each section completes, we try to get it active. That's why Eden, Old Eden area will be completed. It's almost complete right now, and we'll have a customer hooked up next week, we believe. And that area will be 100% complete. And then we're gonna be concentrating in the Pittsville area, fully.
See, you know, I was watching you guys work out that in my neighborhood. And the one road that bewildered me a little bit, and I guess you have to get somewhere, right, is Rome Road. You know, there's like six houses in a two-mile, two-mile road. And I know you're not gonna get 100% participation, you know, when you get all this rent run, but how much participation do you have to have to make it break even or profitable?
We'll never break even.
We'll never break even.
So, everything that we're doing in the grant area, so one of the issues that we have with the grants is you have to pay property tax, excuse me, you have to pay income tax on the grant. So, that's a burden right there. Then we have to pay property tax on the grant, on the fiber that we put in. So, that's another burden. And you're going past six homes every mile or two miles. The income that we're doing, unless there's a community that moves in, is a loss. And that is one of the biggest things we've learned as we've gone along with doing the grants. We've done a lot of grants that we dumped 50% in, we did 40, 50 miles and had a total of 10 homes. You know, you learn while you're building, and when our accountant says, "Hey, you have $100,000 property tax to pay," I'm like, "What? What? What happened? Where did that come from?"
Well, when you get all this built out, you know, you're gonna have people participating in your business, doing business with you. Will that be profitable then?
It's about 100, 100 and some years payback, I mean, to get realistic. So, we did some work in Pokamoke. We did about, what's it?
About 35 miles, and it was 24 homes. It was, ended up like a 250-year ROI. And that's saying that there's no repairs, there's no damage, there's no missed utility tickets. So, ultimately, doing the grant helps us to hop onto a particular area like Salisbury or some other really populated area. So, for instance, and I don't remember all the roads, he knows them better than I do, in our, we call it the Eden Project, but it's, that's just a particular road. The homes are not in the Eden, the homes are straight north, and, yeah, it's a fruitland.
So, that's what, we're not worried about making money on the grants. When we apply for the grants, you get a higher percentage that the state will pay based on how many homes passed. So, if you had eight homes or less per mile, then you get a 90% grant versus an 80% grant. So, the whole purpose is to build the infrastructure for the area, the customers that need it the most, and then on our own dime, after the fact, go and build over Fruitland, Salisbury, places like that. So, it will be profitable when we overbuild on our own dime, but building the grant area isn't gonna make any...
So, I'll give you an example. If you're looking at the map in the Eden Project, we, the state, Maryland state will not give us easement access on the main highway. Was that 50 or 13? 13. So, a lot of rules on that. So, we ended up having to go straight up, around in the community, straight back down. We ended up having to do two and a half, three miles extra just to avoid the state, because they, they have some real weird rules I hope one day get rid of. But that gives us the opportunity, when we're done feeding the homes that we are committed to, to go back and overbuild that whole entire section of Fruitland. And that's where the benefit comes.
Do you have those same issues in Pittsville, trying to get the 60-foot road, or...
So, for the... We haven't had any state problems in Pittsville, correct?
You have a state highway there also?
Yeah, no, you're allowed to cross. You're not allowed to go lateral.
Oh, okay, I see.
Basically, not every highway is. There's called access-controlled highways. If it's fully access-controlled, that means for us to get on there, we have to pay the state forever for an easement, including we have to pay property tax, so it's a double fee. And it could be hundreds of thousands of dollars, and so we just avoid state highways.
We don't have a choice. If we go down and pay the state, then that would be literally every piece of income plus sum of all the homes combined. So, the state makes it very difficult on access-controlled. I don't think there's any talk about changing that, but you're allowed to go lateral. So, we had to go, in this case, with the Eden Project, we had a little problem is literally going lateral, there was a roundabout. So, we had to talk to the state and say, "Hey, we need to go 200 feet to the left, then straight up, and then back over, is that okay?" And they did give us permission to do that, because it's not a linear line. So, but back to the benefits of the grants, it's the old build is what we're looking to do. But we're not doing much overbuild at this point until after our commitment's done. We'll go back and do the overbuild.
The majority of your construction, your active outside of Eden appears to be south of Route 50. When you begin to engage and continue out on the east side, are you gonna go to the north side of 50, you're gonna go to the south side of 50, or is it gonna do it all simultaneously?
So, right now, we're, like I said, we're doing Pittsville, and we've crossed 50, far left. And then we'll come down Old Ocean City Road, and that'll tie us in, we'll cross a 60-foot road, depending on the state's plans. Now, if they have plans for an intersection, I will stay away from it, otherwise, we just have to move everything later on down the road. So, they're letting me know ahead of time, and then we'll tie it. Our next project will be, once we're done with the town of Pittsville, is all around Pittsville and the...
You sort of be going to the north side of 50 first before you address the south?
South side.
The south side. We got a lot of it done down to Powellville Road.
You do have some done down there, yeah, I just didn't know.
There is more down there below that we have to do to get down to the...
Your progress right now is gonna be in the northern area and then finishing off the southern area.
Yeah, so we have contractors that, they're doing the drill work. Internally, we're doing the plow work. So, it's not just one crew doing the work, there's two different crews. So, the general, the south side has a lot of open space. So, we'll do that internally. So, there'll be multiple projects running at the same time.
Instead of paying a, or having a contractor do a drill, like 60-foot road from 50 south, it'll take them a couple of weeks. Our plow can, 5,000 feet a day going, so they can do about a mile a day with our plow. So, rather than have them do it, we get our...
You, you guys need to get some sandwich signs put out that says Talky Commu... I mean, I get these phone calls all the time, and when I tell people what it's about, they're excited. So, you know, when your crews are out there working, you know, some little signs stuck up, you know, it would help, you know?
We just ordered a bunch of signs, so they're coming.
There should be a door hanger put a week before we come down the road. There should be door hangers put up. If you have any questions, call the number, we're coming.
So, yeah, so what we normally would do is the construction, like you said, put the door hangers, and it's not advertisement, it just says, "Talky's doing construction in your area." Once the product is completed, then we do door hangers of saying, more like the advertisement. If they sign up, we put a sandwich board, like you said, like it's a core plast sign, a little real estate, in the yard. So, we ordered about 1,000 of them, just two, three days ago, we ran out. We also do direct mailers, so we'll mail out the whole entire general area, letting everybody know. But we normally do that once it's completed. But yes, it's great advertisement, for sure.
You know, when I tell them, you know, it's gonna be broadband, "All right, glad to hear it," you know?
Yeah.
Anyway. Appreciate you coming in. We'll reschedule in about six months, whatever might work for you, so.
Yep, and hopefully we can show all the areas that are all lit, so.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Have a wonderful day.
Item we have on the agenda is a presentation from the local management board, huh? Mr. Bosman? And I say Bosman, but is it Bozeman?
It's Bosman.
It is Bosman, okay.
Guess we're good afternoon now.
Yes, we are. And again, as we always do, from my left to right, if you'd let, who's at the table, that would be pretty... Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Kim Miles, I'm here today as chair of our local management board.
Good afternoon, Tim Bosman. I'm the director of the local management board.
Good afternoon. Roy Bruynson, director of DSS, but I'm here today as a board member from management board.
You have the floor.
Thank you. So, again, thank you for allowing us time to come in and talk to the council today. We're here to talk about our draft community agenda, strategic plan, however you want to look at it, for the next three years. So, just a little background, all local management boards in the state are required to do a community needs assessment every three to five years. In Wacomico, we just choose to do it every three years. That way, we're keeping current on the community needs, gaps in service, so we can address them faster and more efficiently than waiting five years or so, every five years to do it. So, this process started in April for this turnaround before I got here. And we sent copies of the draft agenda. And just a little bit of background, again, you know, the local management board or the Wacomico partnership, we're the hub for collaboration for child services. So, we take a look at all the eight Maryland child well-being result areas and the data, community surveys. We actually spoke to, I'm gonna say nearly 200 people in this process. We went to a couple of big community events, smaller events, and just talked to people, asked them what their needs are, what they think, you know, we should be doing. And we put this together, and in front of you, you should have the draft collective agenda that will take us through 2024 and 2026. So, just a couple of things to highlight. The main results that we are looking at are communities are safe for children, youth, and families, that children are successful in school, and youth have opportunities for employment or career readiness, and families are safe and economically stable. So, from that, we suggest three main priorities and strategies. Two of them come from the old plan, which is increasing community awareness and access to coordinate a system of support, and then also addressing multigenerational poverty. The new main shift in this three-year plan is expanding community-based programs and innovative approaches for child well-being. And the different priorities are mainly new, and I'll just go through them real quick. There's four of them. To expand, coordinate, and enhance access to mental behavioral health services for students. Apply whole family and trauma-informed approaches in programs and partnerships. Engage youth in designing solutions intended to benefit them. And supporting the health department, mainly their local behavioral health authority and our health coalition to collaboratively address health disparities in the county. Below that is the different indicators that we call, different data points that we will be looking at throughout these three years to measure our success and to see how we need to shift program or whatever. So, at this point right now, we're at the point where our board of directors will be looking at this draft next Thursday to formally approve it or make any last-minute changes that we need. But we're in the process right now of what we're calling field testing. We're trying to get in front as many people as possible, including, you know, the council for any comments, suggestions, anything you don't see, anything you'd like to see in this, so that way we can take it back in time for next week for our board to take that into consideration and approve the final, the final plan for us.
Is most of your project or your staff, is it working one-on-one with the families and the children? What exactly is, is most of the time revolved around?
So, as far as a staff perspective, so, a lot of what we do, we're, we're taking the money that comes in from the children's cabinet through the state, and we're giving that out, as in, like many grants, I would call it, to different organizations that are doing the direct work with the children and the families. But we're kind of overseeing that, we're monitoring that work, because they have certain performance measures and goals that they have to do through these programs that we're monitoring and making sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. Basically, I guess another way to describe it is we're, we're deciding what different kind of programs and funds that we wanna, we want the community to be doing. And then due to requests for proposals, we pick our vendors that way, and then they're doing the direct service work with them.
I really like that, under the priorities and strategies, having the, addressing multigenerational poverty. I guess the only real way that we can do that is building wealth. And I think that's the real, that's the real missing part of all of this, right, is that we need folks, we need more individuals to build wealth, to be able to be more resilient. You know, I don't know, I'm reading through this, I see, obviously, the financial capacity building, budgeting, those kind of things are helpful. I mean, obviously, we've had a smattering of those kinds of things from 4H to others that have gotten that, that financial literacy or other kind of things there. But is there anything we can do a little more broadly or specifically targeted? Things like, you know, Salisbury Neighborhood Housing Service, fantastic organization that helps target families to move in that direction of homeownership. You were asking if there's anything to add to it. This is a trial run, anything we could be doing, you know, the more that we can focus on shifting families towards acquiring and holding wealth. They're not gonna, most of them are, obviously, I'm gonna be able to do that given the incomes that they have and the limited options, but as a whole, that's really where we need to do, we need to go if we want to try to get at some of these larger issues. So, anything you want to say there?
Yeah, so actually, right now, we have a request for proposal out on a financial literacy program, and that dollar amount is directed towards children that are living in poverty at that poverty level line. And whoever that vendor's gonna be needs to coordinate with the school system, identifying those students and developing their program to work with those students to help, as you say, build that financial stability. So, it's just a start.
You said, did you say they had an RFP out?
Yeah.
What is the closing deadline for that?
That will close October 31st.
Okay.
You guys partner with, was it Epic or Epoch? Is that that children's organization in Hebron?
We have not to date, no.
There has been in past years. I think what you're touching on, Mr. Nguyen, is a strength and one of the greatest celebrations of the local management board and Wacomico partnership. One of the focus areas is building that weave of strength, integrating the resources and the agencies and the persons in the community to be able to address the areas in the collective agenda. And different vendors, different groups have the opportunity through the RFP process, and that rotates different areas of focus as time changes. But as was just referenced by Mr. Bosman, the one RFP collaborating with the school system. No one is an island unto themselves, and the strength that we have for our community is getting people to work together in a cohesive and focused manner to meet the needs. So, that's a good way to bring that up.
And just because we don't fund somebody doesn't mean we don't collaborate and work with them too. You know, we invite everybody to the table to, you know, to address this bigger issues.
You guys do anything with the food bank at all, or, I mean, I'm just, I have no idea.
So, we, we have in the past, and right now, we've, we're doing our child hunger program right now, where we've, we've setting up a food bank at the LMB office that we're using.
Cool.
Yep.
I think, I would like to say this, and I apologize for not getting to the meetings, because I forget, I'm writing it down now.
We'll see.
I think when we talk about youth and financial stability, you gotta deal with the parents within the home, because you might teach the child something in school, but they got to go back home. And sometimes, especially young parents, don't prioritize what's important. And sometimes, especially young parents, don't prioritize what's important. And I think that we need to train the parent what's important. And I think when we make, one of the problems is making, especially single mothers, dependent on the system and not training them, they have to work for what they receive. And one way to work, they should volunteer for something in the community, if it's a child's school or somewhere, they should just kind of earn their money and train and not be on the system forever and have that multi-generational welfare. Because I still can't understand why our kids are going hungry when they're getting food stamps. How are they spending the food stamps? And then you have seniors that have worked practically all their life, they only get $16 or $20 worth of food stamps, and you hear a young person who has children, they get all this money, but their children are still going hungry. So that's the problem I have. We need to teach people and the mother and the family, make it holistic. And sometimes, you have to visit the homes, because when we worked with partnership with my church, we went in the, we went into the home and dealt with the parents and kind of worked that way, so.
You bring up a very important part of the work that happens, and obviously, you're very well, very much familiar with the draft collective agenda. If you look in the area for addressing multi-generational poverty, the last bullet focuses on educating and mentoring children, youth, and families in life skills. And, Michelle, all that you were describing, those are life skills, and life skills include personal decision-making. So that's part of the process that has to happen with that, that strong sense of support throughout the system and the community.
That's good, that's good.
Appreciate you coming in very much so. It's always nice to get spaces, everything, and get down into the details as far as what you specifically do. And you're doing really great work, and we appreciate that as well.
Again, thank you for letting us come in.
Here, thanks for...
Thank you.
We'll see you at two o'clock.
I see we're gonna take about a 20-minute recess, lunch, before we go into the closed
session.
We're reconvening as the Wacomico County Council for Legislative Session 2023-20 for October 17th, 2023. I entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution Number 138-2023. Second? Discussion. Good evening. If you could announce, if you, you know, the routine, starting from however you choose for the public.
Hi, good afternoon, I'm Jennifer Derrickson, I'm with Davenporting Company, the county's financial advisor.
Pam Olin, finance director.
Thank you, you have the floor.
So, this morning at 10:15, we sold our taxable bonds, which pay for the airport projects, and we got an advantageous tax rate of 5.7%. We were expecting it to be over 6. So for us to be at 5.7, it actually went up less than half a point than last year. So even with all the interest rate increases that the federal government have happened, our financial position made people bid in a great way for us, so we only went up less than half a point. And then, on the tax-exempt side, we sold $4.195 million worth of bonds, all of it is for school projects, primarily finishing up the Mardella Middle and High School project and a couple roof projects, if I remember correctly. But we got those for 4.3 million, or 4.3%. Again, less than half a percent increase from last year at this time. We were, that one, we were all predicting right in the mid 4.5-ish, so we were a little closer on that estimate, but again, still very good, very strong. We had five bidders on the tax-exempt and four bidders on the taxable. And, again, the interest rates on the taxable actually surprised us, and I view it as a great win for the county to have only gone up that much when we were actually predicting higher interest rates than that. So, I request that council accept this bond package, accept this. We have received our good faith estimates from both groups, Raymond James was one and PNC was the other, and we have received our good faith estimates, so they have given us money. So, closing would then happen on October 31st.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Flass, I should ask you this before, in order to make this, in order to approve this resolution, do we need to amend it with these rates in here and just keep it as a broad amendment, just to accept these two interest rates?
The version of the resolution that was in the briefbook was just a template resolution, it had a bunch of blank lines. The updated version is on the council tables. I don't think, Mr. Benson, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think there's, an amendment needs to be made, unless you're looking to change what's on the table.
Well, I haven't read it yet, so I'm just asking you as to whether or not we need to make an amendment.
Typically, what has happened is, is we have given you a template, showing you what the things are going to look like with the possibility of where things fall, but when we put on the table, actually, what you introduced was this complete document with no blanks in it. So, what the motion and the second was, was this document, not something else.
Reflecting these interest rates?
Yes.
Oh, perfect, okay, that's what I was asking. I didn't know. I thought maybe this was still blank.
No, 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 you have, so you have the complete document, you have, it talks about who was the winning bidder, sorry, I did not turn that off, we were trying to contact each other, I apologize. And so it, what you just did the motion and the second on is the complete document.
Same rates, perfect. Any questions?
Early payoff.
We typically have that in, but it's typically at about 10 years. And so, I believe we've structured this the same way as before, but we can't refinance until about 10 years out.
And that's something that we continue to monitor for all of the county's outstanding bonds, just to see if there's any refunding opportunities. However, with the rates where they are currently, the county does not have any refunding opportunities at this point, but that's something that we monitor on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?